Hold your flag, United States of America.
And to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vote of silence? Thank you. Roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kelwinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple. Rakos.
Here.
Eight present, one absent. Mayor.
Hi, thanks, Councilman. It's good to see you all. Sorry I wasn't at the last council meeting. I had something come up last second, so I had Phil cover me. So I have a few more activities I wanted to talk about. A couple important ones I wanted to talk about we did, and then talk about a couple issues facing you. Started off with the activity log. Held Mayor's Night out in the 2nd District. That was before the last council meeting. I appreciate Councilman Salinas and him hosting that event. It was at Irving Elementary. I thought it was a really good Mayor's Night. I attended a two-day summit in downtown Chicago for FEMA. It was the FEMA Urban Flooding Summit. It was downtown Chicago. FEMA members from all over the country came to Chicago. I found myself as the only elected official, I think, in the entire audience. I found myself surrounded by a bunch of engineers and asked myself a couple times what I was doing here. So I tried to keep up with what they were talking about, but I think what I walked away from is, you know, obviously, we've heard a lot about global warming, but basically, the summary I took from that event is there's a lot of programs out there that help us when we're devastated. And if FEMA has any warnings for us, where we are here in Indiana is prepare for more frequent drenching rainstorms. They had the map and it laid out the country on the map, and parts of the country that are going to get drier, and you know, and then parts of the country are going to get wetter. Indiana had a green stripe over it, and then it had a dark green stripe right over the region, going all the way down to Indianapolis. The dark green stripe came from Chicago as well, and they supported this with historical flood data that shows the floods are hitting the same exact areas and the same parts of the city, and they're storms of the century. It was pretty bleak. Honestly, I don't really have a lot of good news going to that summit. I met a lot of cool FEMA people. They have a lot of great programs, but the fact is, we should prepare for a lot more storms of the century. That was the moral to the story that they told me. And if we were in other parts of the country, they would say, "You're not going to have any storms at all." But we're in a part of the country where we're supposedly going to get a lot more storms, so anyway. Met with reps from the Northwest Indiana Pickleball Association, which, as we all know, I think we only have one pickleball court in this entire city of Hammond right now, and that's in the 4th District in Indyoli. We're about to get a lot more. The Pickleball Association is real interested in our city. They're looking at locations, and they want to make a deal. And pickleball is exploding across the region, obviously across the country. The largest pickleball association around here, I believe, is in the Mansards Department, and we have way better opportunities than what the Mansards Department could offer, so I'll keep you apprised on that. I think it's a good opportunity for us. I attended the 2024 Purdue Northwest Hall of Fame Dinner, where they honored Jeff Strack with a Hall of Fame induction, Strack and Van Tyl. They honored Judge Kevin D. Snyder as well as myself, so a great night. Appeared on WJOB Radio with Jed to talk about city business over the last couple weeks. Held a GoFundMe. That's why I have this amazing haircut right now, for the wife of a Hammond firefighter, Allison Gleason. She's the daughter-in-law to our former street superintendent Gary Gleason, the head of Public Works. She's the wife of Craig Gleason, who's a Hammond firefighter. She's a mother. She's a Hammond girl. She's been fighting breast cancer, and she's on her second bout with it. She's going through radiation chemotherapy. She's got a special-needs child. It was a nightmare scenario. She's a wonderful person, from a wonderful family. We raised close to $25,000 for her. A lot of people in this room donated. A lot of people watching right now from GoHammond donated. 100% of the money we raised went to Allison Gleason and her family, 100%. So thank you for everybody that gave me this great haircut. Attended meetings with the following council people over the last couple weeks. Councilman Salinas and I met twice. Councilman Warple and I met twice. Councilman Tyler, Councilman Spitali, Councilman Vines, Councilman Warple, Councilman Rakos. Thank you for meeting with me over the last few weeks. Met internally with the FOP negotiating team, finalized our response to their initial offer, and the FOP is officially in possession of our response. They're looking for significant pay raises. I'm willing to talk off the record individually with Councilmen if they have particular questions. I don't want to talk publicly about private negotiations, but obviously, you guys are the financial boss of the city, and I want to keep you apprised of what's going on, but they are looking for significant pay raises. Significant. I think that's a good word for it. Interviewed with South Bend Tribune over the ShotSpotter technology we are currently implementing in the city of Hammond. I want to thank the entire city council for helping support the city in putting that effort forward. The only holdup right now is the school city of Hammond. Believe it or not, I had a meeting with the school city today to talk about, "Why are you holding up officer safety?" Makes no sense to me. Hopefully, they're going to work on that issue, and if they don't, I will make it a much bigger issue than it is right now. Because they're literally, I got through NIPSCO, and we can't get through our own damn school city. It's ridiculous. But they got big problems over there, a lot bigger than ShotSpotter, so. Met with the Hammond firefighters on Shift 3 in the Central Fire Station for my monthly meeting with the firefighters. Met with the NIPSCO's VP of Public Affairs, promoter Phil Scheringa, excuse me, Phil Skaringa, who was previously an engineer to the Chief Inspector of the Hammond Firefighters Inspection Bureau. Phil Skaringa is also a town councilman in Town of Highland, so good job, Phil. Congratulations. He's an Assistant Chief now. Met with Representative Jackson to talk about important legislation coming out of the General Assembly that's going to affect us. Leadlines. This is our next big bill. I don't know when it's going to hit, but it's a big, big, big bill. To give you an idea of what we're talking about, that we wanted to convert the entire city of Hammond's housing stock and get rid of the leadlines that we all have in our houses. We all do. It would be around $275 million. So if you guys get your hands on $275 million, let's knock that out right away. Until then, I'll let you know what the state thinks we should do about this, but this is an issue. Carolyn brought it forward to me. Representative Jackson brought it forward. We had a good meeting, so I will keep you appraised. So we're in six new Hammond firefighters. I'm sorry about all this stuff today. Met with residents and business leaders of the Hessville community, spoke to them at length about two important projects in Hessville. I want to thank Councilman Rakos for helping consolidate everybody into that meeting. We talked about Governor's Parkway Bridge, as well as the Grand Avenue Pedestrian Bridge. I felt like I had good marching orders, and I appreciate the meeting. So lunch with Nick Loxus, Ann Tyler, Phil Talon, and myself in regards to seven acres of property owned by the Loxus family at 4,300 Block of Calumet. We were working with this great Hammond family to see if we can develop this excellent location right off the Indiana Toll Road. I think it was a real good meeting, so thank you for Mr. Loxus for meeting with us. Completed the final round of interviews for the Hammond Deputy Fire Chief position. I will have a decision made by the end of May. We don't have to make a decision until then. The following candidates were interviewed by a panel of experts at the workings of the Hammond Fire Department. Battalion Chief Mike Redine was interviewed, Assistant Chief Steven Brzezinski, Battalion Chief Daniel D'Ambala, Assistant Chief David Weiss, Assistant Chief Carl Rippe, and Battalion Chief Ryan Aguiano. One of those six will be chosen as the next deputy chief of the fire department. Created a new position in the mayor's office. We call it the Office of Constituent Services. The person that's going to run that is Alex DeHura. I'm promoting Kristy Orms to the office, the managing, the office manager of my office. We're not hiring any new staff. We're going to use part-timers to cover the rest. Action items for the council tonight. We talked right before we got in here about the development agreement that's getting approved hopefully by you all tonight in regards to the Hammond YMCA. Largest YMCA in the country, 120,000 square foot building. Will be done by December this year. City Hammond's incentives are $10 million. $5 million we already approved through APRA. We're going to use the other $5 million from TIFF and give them about $1 million worth of land. That's the deal. $70 million deal in total, so it's a good deal for the city. We talked about Mickey's Linens. This is a project where we take a current laundromat that operates with, that launders hospital linens and convert it into the same operation in the 2nd District. I know it's coming for a conditional variance with you all. It's a great project, and you know, I want to thank the owner for being here today. Last but not least, we submitted a proposal to you in regards to garbage and recycling fees in the city of Hammond. Last year, city Hammond experienced a loss. If you look at this as a business, with garbage and recycling, the city of Hammond lost close to $600,000 last year. Each year, that loss grows about $300,000, so in 2024, it'll be close to $1 million. Next year, it'll be 1.2. It grows like that. We made a proposal to the Hammond Council to consider, and it's up for adoption tonight. Something that we recommend is increasing by $5 the monthly charge to Hammond residents, which will pick us up to $26 a month. We made sure that that was appropriate with what other cities and towns in the area are charging. Give you an idea, Gary charges $24.15 currently. Town of Munster charges $29.36. Griffith charges $23. Highland charges $27. Crown Point charges $23. Whiting charges $7.50. Maryville charges $63 every three months, so we would be right in the sweet spot. And more importantly, it's projected if we pass this, we're not going to be using gaming money to pay for the red ink that we create. Last year, we had to use gaming money to bail out the garbage fund, $600,000. This year, it'll be closer to $1 million unless we pass this increase, so I think that it's appropriate to pass this increase. Obviously, these costs, the cost increase that we got from a new contract from Republic and a new contract from Waste Management, we're passing along those costs to our customers. Sorry about a lot of info, so I'm available for questions.
Do you have any questions for the mayor?
Pat Councilman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Evening, Mayor.
Yes, sir. How you doing?
Good. How about you?
Good, thank you.
Regarding sanitary district and garbage. Have we done anything with the biosolids about trying to sell it?
Yeah, you know, thank you, Councilman. Good question. I was just reading the sanitary district meeting minutes from a meeting a couple weeks ago, and they were talking about how they had to get the biosolids out to the farmers right away. Sounds like it's not a moneymaker. It's more like by giving them biosolids on the cheap, it allows us not to have to dispose of them ourselves, which saves us money. But I don't think we're selling the biosolids, okay? But please, I would ask you to follow that up with the sanitary district, who probably knows way more information about this than I do, but I do.
Just wondering if it's an opportunity.
Well, where I think the opportunity is in the district is with the gases that are emitted. And we could literally make electricity with that, and we are looking at that, Councilman. Is the gas, and I know you're scientific, the gases that are coming from our operation could drive turbines and create electricity. There has been discussion. I know the prior CEO had discussions that has been initiated as well by the current CEO, so I think that's an opportunity for the district.
And if I can follow up.
Sure, please.
Two weeks ago, when you weren't here, I mentioned it brought up issues at 341st Street.
Yes, sir.
And.
Yes, sir.
And I want to say thank you to the city for validating my concerns.
Parking.
Putting a stop order on the gate.
Yes, sir.
We get stuff figured out, so I just want to.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And you know, I know, last meeting, there was some concern about lighting, and we followed that up vigorously. That's, if that's happening, Councilman Mark, it's, it'll be stomped. And it's certainly not authorized if it's happening, so thank you. Sorry. I missed the last meeting. I knew there'd be a lot. And if I could initiate one, that FEMA lecture, I think Councilman Mark, you would have appreciated it, but it's bleak what they're talking about. They're literally, they're showing flood maps from the last few floods in Chicago, and obviously, we're right next to Chicago. It's literally the same exact flood map from different storms, meaning these storms are hitting certain parts of the city over and over again. Certain neighborhoods, literally like hitting certain neighborhoods, and you're having the same problems, and it's massive. Yes, sir.
You may or may not know, but has sanitary now implemented the new programs?
I'm going off of what I read yesterday also, Councilman Mark, and I know that there was a mention about, Owana is working on the final details of that as we speak, and Councilman Barry's name was mentioned as well.
Yeah, I just, if I can, I just talked to Mylan about that a couple days ago, and they're still working out the details. There were some updates to the federal guidelines that Owana was looking into, and so what I was told was that within the next couple of weeks, they should have more information to release, and they can begin installing the backflow preventers at that point.
But the other program for the 2,000 per your backwater flow preventer, is that in place?
Okay.
Because there's two programs going on.
One for federal money for people who qualify economically, and the other, believe so on the other one. I'm going to, I'm going to get a next meeting, I promise I'll have a hard answer, okay? I'll follow this up. I don't want to say something and it not be true. The one I was reading about, you're right, is the one that's being funded with federal money. It has to do with poverty guidelines, so.
Mr. President. Yes, Councilman.
Mayor, I just want to, I was at the event where you got honored into the Purdue Hall of Fame, so congratulations on that. It was, it was a great event, and I know a great honor.
I don't cry publicly very often, so.
My question is about the FEMA meeting in terms of, you said there were some supports that we might be eligible for. Is that something that you're?
I grabbed a bunch of info there, but it's like, I was like, I'm learning from scratch. They, I literally walked out with like 20 pamphlets of info, and yeah. They made sure to mention to me that I'm from Indiana. They, and by the way, it was such an excellent lecture. I actually talked to them about coming to Hammond and maybe presenting something to you all. If you're interested, I could probably follow that up. He would literally come to a council meeting, a FEMA rep. He's like the Midwest, and it's amazing and depressing. Really, when you look at it, there's not much we could do. These storms are coming, and they're going to hit us, and we just got to prepare it, so the best thing you could do is prepare your house, like we're talking about, and start rethinking your systems. And when you're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars we spent on this system, and it's like, I don't want to say it's not big enough to accommodate what's coming, but sometimes it is too small, so. But it was a good meeting, and I'm glad I'm on the radar of FEMA, because I wasn't on the radar of FEMA before. They literally invited me to that, and I didn't see any other politicians there, so I was glad I was there. I'm sorry about the long message today.
Anybody else?
I try not to spend a long time up here, so thank you all. It's good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me know that Councilman Warple's here. We now have nine present in chambers. Next up, approval minutes.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Vines.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the April 8th meeting and place them on file.
Second.
Got a motion, a second by Councilman Warple, approve the minutes from April 8th. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next up, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for approval of claims, beginning with claims dated April 9th, 2024, and ending with claims dated April 17th, 2024. Claim number 3307 through claim number 3757, inclusive in the amount of $4,479,218.50.
Second.
Got a motion, a second by Councilman Warple to approve claims. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. Claims passes 9-0. Next up, public hearings.
24-07, in ordinance to appropriate funds in the hotel motel in keepers tax fund for economic development purposes in 2024.
Okay. Is there anybody who'd like to, from the public, who would like to speak on 2407? Anyone like to speak on 2407? Anybody here to speak on 2407? Public hearings closed. Next up, communications.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Our scholarship is now available, and applications will be due on May 3rd for our students that are in our Hammond schools. Those applications will be due May 3rd to Lydia McNeely at 41 William Streets. All applications must have original signatures. That's a reminder to those students that we'll be filling them out. The drawing will take place on May 13th here in the council meeting at 6:00 PM. So I want to encourage all of our Hammond seniors to fill out that application for our Hammond scholarship. That is $1,000, where we'll be giving out 15 of those scholarships.
Thank you. Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
Council as a whole will be bringing out 2407 and 2408.
Eight.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The Capital Improvement Board met on April 15th, 2024. We dealt with the funding allocation for the Marble Street Reconstruction. Milestone contractors north in the amount of $348,048.34. However, the Capital Improvement Board will be responsible for $137,000. Next, we dealt with the Sibley, 422 Sibley Parking Improvements with NICE Engineering in the amount of $14,800. Next, we dealt with the HASS Traffic Study Funding Allocation from NICE Engineering in the amount of $7,740. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I'd like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch groups, meetings. On May 21st, the East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet at the Ophelia Steen Center at 6:00 PM. Did I say May 21st? Edison Community Watch will meet May 1st, which is Wednesday, 6:30 PM at Edison School. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, May, no, that's the end of the month. Hold on just one second. April 30th at the VFW on Holman Avenue. Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, May 16th, 6:00 PM at the Gene Shepherd Center. Irving Community Watch will meet Friday, May 3rd, 9:30 AM at Irving School in the Art Room. Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, May 9th, 6:30 PM at Calumet College. As usual, I would like to encourage everyone to attend a community or crime watch meeting, because we are the eyes and the ears of our police department. And many times, when they're riding around through our neighborhood, they cannot see something that has happened or is in progress or whatever if they're on the next block in our neighborhood. So it behooves us to be the eyes and ears and call 911 and let them know what's going on in our neighborhoods, because community is not just about me. It's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other committee reports? Next up, ordinance, third and final reading.
24-07, in ordinance to appropriate funds in the hotel motel in keepers tax fund for economic development purposes in 2024.
President.
Councilwoman, Councilman Spitali.
Final passage, 2407.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Vines, 2407. Any discussion?
President.
Yes, Councilman.
The sponsors ordinance annually appropriate funds for hotel motel in keepers tax fund for economic development. In keepers tax fund is used for marketing purposes, emotional events, advertising for economic development in the city of Hammond. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. 2407 passes 9-0.
2408, in ordinance, amending ordinance numbers 4686, 4695, 4770, and 9619, otherwise known as subsection 94.041, garbage collection fees of the City of Hammond Municipal Code.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
Move for final passage and adoption at 2408.
Second.
Got a motion, a second by Councilwoman Vines. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
As the mayor explained, we have a shortfall in sanitary district because of garbage pickup, and we've been covering it with gaming money. And this will allow us to cover that shortfall and bring back some of the gaming money we were spending on it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. 2408 passes 9-0. Okay. Introduction of ordinances.
2409, in ordinance creating a new fund, Fund 2485, for Indiana Department of Homeland Security EMS Training Grant Funds awarded to the Hammond Fire Department.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for first and second reading of 2409.
Second.
Second by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
Yes, this is simply creating a line item for the grant funds awarded to the Hammond Fire Department.
Okay. We'll bring it up for third and final on the 13th?
Oh, yes.
May 13th? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. When I pass that first and second reading, 9-0.
2410, in ordinance creating a new fund, Fund 2484, for HUD Home Investment Partnership Program, American Rescue Plan Funds awarded to the City of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of 2410.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tyler. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
This is also creating a new fund for American Rescue Plan Funds awarded to the City of Hammond for the Home Investment Partnership Program.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. 2410 passes second reading, 9-0. Okay. Next up, resolutions.
24R06, a resolution of the Hammond Common Council approving the development agreement among the City of Hammond, Indiana, the City of Hammond Redevelopment Commission, the City of Hammond Economic Development Commission, and Crossroads Young Men's Christian Association. City of Hammond Economic Development Commission, and Crossroads Young Men's Christian Association.
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler.
I move for adoption of Resolution 24R-06.
Second.
A motion and a second by Councilman Warple. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
As the mayor described earlier, this is a resolution outlining the redevelopment agreement between us and the YMCA. The agreement is in total of about $10 million, with $5 million coming from ARPA funding that we passed, I think, a couple, a few years ago, and additional $5 million coming from a TIF, and then $1 million in land value through a forgivable mortgage. And this is, as he said, also 120,000 square foot YMCA. First portion will be opening in December of this year, and with the water park, an additional part of the building opening up in 2025, 2026, sorry.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Salinas?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakos?
New and unfinished business.
Want to read the VZA?
Can you please? You want to read that? Thank you. Could you read that for us, please?
2411, petition of Mickey's Linen and Towel Supply Incorporated for variance of use for modification to the conditions of approval for a variance of use granted in Z928 to extend the previously authorized use for a purchaser of property located at 5530 Holman Avenue within the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Salinas.
I ask that we approve petition referenced 2411?
Second.
A motion and a second by Councilman Warple. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
This is a petition sent to us from the VZA Board for approval to basically transfer ownership and operation rights from St. Margaret's Franciscan to Mickey's Linens and Towel Supply. This is an expansion project for Mickey's Linens, locating out of 5530 Holman Avenue. The current variance on file dates back to 1992, and it was pretty specific with regards to exclusive use of the hospital. This modification in front of us today will allow Mickey's Linens to operate in that same fashion to various vendors.
Thank you. Any other discussion on 2411? Discussion on 2411? Any discussion on 2411? Roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Salinas?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes. 2411 passes 9-0. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. Next up. Public expression. First up, George Stoya. Thank you, George. Next up, TJ Gertie.
Good evening, council members, and happy Earth Day to you all. I wanted to talk about, last month I went to the film debut of Walkable USA, which featured the improvements going on in downtown Hammond to make it a walkable city that people want to come and visit. It was a fantastic film, and it really put Hammond in a, in a great light and got everyone real excited. But unfortunately, there's hypocrisy in the city planning of Hammond because there's a project on the other side of town, Governor's Parkway, that by, by all metrics will make Hammond less walkable. First off, it will close the crossing at Parish Avenue completely, which we see people walking down all the time during our forest clean upstairs. And instead, it will add, it'll have them going uphill along a winding bridge that will delay them there. Second off, it destroys over two miles of walkable trails going through Briar East Woods that people use every day. And you can tell that they use them because those trails are still there and not overgrown. And most of all, it does nothing to help kids who walk to school on Grand Avenue. And so there's a solution on Grand Avenue that will make Hessville far more walkable, where if you just put an overpass right where the problem is, right, right where people need it, right where people have been asking for it, it'll just be a better solution for everyone and make Hammond more walkable. I also wanted to talk about how the mayor touched on the FEMA summit he went to, and he said, we have an extremely bleak situation regarding flooding coming down the pipeline in Hammond. There was major flooding last year that impacted hundreds of residents, and you saw many of them here telling you their stories. And there was even worse flooding in 2020. And that's going to keep on happening, and I know you all are very interested in finding solutions, but you're for some reason helping push through the new development at Briar East Woods, Governor's Parkway. Now, there's a lowland in Briar East Woods that's an ephemeral wetland, which is, in the spring, it fills up with water, and then during the summer it dries up. And also, there's a lake, and then about a mile of sand dunes. And all of these features are, are crucial elements in Hessville that reduce flooding. If you destroy it, it will make flooding worse for the city.
Thank you, TJ. Next up, Ken Rosick.
Greetings, council. I'm going to show you a couple of charts here. One of the things that I wanted to add on a little bit here, what TJ was talking about, as far as, you know, the doomed woodlands, it's a big sponge, a gigantic sponge. In 2020, we had the worst flooding Hessville's ever seen. Hundreds of homes had water coming through their front doors. Okay? And I saw that water coming down my street, because it's downhill, and it turned into a river. And that water came from this area, this area right here, where you guys plan to develop. That is the highest point in Hammond, in Hessville. Everything else on either side is downhill from there. Okay? Those streets and the eventual development that is coming, because that's the point of all this, isn't it? Let's not fool ourselves. The taboo word of the day is unsustainable development. None of you, none of you will ever talk about it. You'll talk about backflow preventer valves, you'll talk about this and that, and heavy rain events. We told you there were going to be a 17% increase in heavy rain events two years ago. That was by Purdue University. Okay, this is no secret. This has been, we've talked about it openly with this common council several times. And you're going to develop an area that is our gigantic sponge. That's going the exact opposite direction. The reason why the FRA, the Federal Railway Administration, wanted a Grand Avenue solution over here is because all of the hazards that were listed in the grant application occurred at that location. It didn't happen over here. None of them on Parish. Kids hopping trains, parents taking their children to and from school. The fatal accident occurred at that Grand Avenue location, not over here. That bridge design failed entirely by addressing any of the public safety issues that they used as a reason to build this project. The emergency services, next, emergency services, and this should be of major interest to the president of the common council, he's a fireman. We have been told for four, four years, every second counts, every second matters. It's been drilled into us at every mayor's night out. But look at this, this is an extra 30 seconds to each and every response. The fastest route right through here, from the fire station here, is Parish Avenue. You're going to close it and make people serve in time. That's a half mile road with a bridge and six turns. 37.
Thank you, Ken. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, Councilman Salinas. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?